All right, the time is 6:00 PM. We'll go ahead and begin with a roll call, please.
Here.
John Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Hawkins will be not attending this evening. Councilmember Karen Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kristen Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle Cordes.
Here.
Councilmember Judy Hughes will not be in attendance today.
Okay, thank you. Let's begin with a pledge of allegiance, a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Commander, would you like to step up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ma'am.
At this time, we will go ahead and open our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules may limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noted for discussion and legal action. I do have one call to the public that would like to speak during item 6B. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Closing call to the public. Item number 6A is our hearings and presentations. At this time, we're going to open up item A, which is our public hearing to receive citizens' comments on an application received from Jose Maldondo, American Legion, Post 9, for a Class B bingo license located at 441 North Main Street, Florence, Arizona, for council recommendation for approval or disapproval of said license. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, the Clerk's office did receive an application for a Class B bingo license. We have properly posted, gave a notice, and the American Legion is here, ready to speak to you on behalf of their license. So I would like to invite them up to the podium so they can let the council know a little bit about what they're going to be doing at the American Legion.
Thank you, council members. Thank you, mayor. Basically, we're trying to apply for a bingo license. We have five bingo machines in our hall, and we're trying to get a license to actually have them go online in the near future. Those bingo machines will help us fund our programs, help vets, help the kids in the community, and basically take over for the old way of doing bingo machines, like the old ball. The way the machines work is the numbers on the machines correlate to an actual bingo card. So not to be confused with any other type of machine, it's a bingo machine. That's all. Do I have any questions from the council members or mayor?
Councilmember Wall has a question.
Just a quick question, if anyone were interested. I noticed in the application, it indicated the time says 8 to 10, and both AM and PM were marked. Is it 8 to 10 PM?
It's from 8 to 10 PM.
Okay. The application says both, so...
It's 8 AM to 10 PM.
Oh, so it's all day?
It'll be all day, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my question.
So, Mayor, and members in council, what we need to do is we need to hold our public hearing, invite the public to have comment, and then forward on a recommendation to the state.
All right. So at this time, I'm going to open up the public commenting period. Is there anybody that would like to speak at this time?
You're very welcome.
All right, I am going to close the public commenting period, and at this time, I would like a recommendation.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the bingo license.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our second public hearing is item B, and this is to receive citizens' comments on the proposed change to the existing wall and fence height requirements in the Florence Gardens, units A through F, and first reading of ordinance number 682-19. This is an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penaue County, Arizona, approving certain uses of property within units through A through F of Florence Gardens. At this time, Mr. Larry Harmer, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Good evening. This is an attempt to assist Florence Gardens in self-governance within their community. It is a unique community. They approached us last year, and we've been working with them on language and things that assist them in what they're trying to accomplish. Two things primarily. The association was founded back in 1971, and there's been a lot of changes and updates and different things occurring there over the years, one of which has to do with the front property line. Currently, our code and their HOA both restrict the fences and the front property to three feet. Some of the property owners in there, there's been a few cropped up over the years, have gone to four feet to enclose some of their animals, medium-sized dogs primarily, maybe even larger dogs. As was pointed out by a planning commission member when this went through them for recommendations, he could straddle a three-foot fence, he won't even attempt a four-foot fence, and he feels that that's more of an appropriate fence height for the dog. So this overlay would basically grandfather in and permit those four-foot fences, and in the future, allow Florence Gardens to, should they so desire, allow additional four-footers for similar circumstances, but allow them to govern it within that area. We're not recommending changing our development code at this point in time because we'd be talking throughout all of the zoning classifications in order to tackle it that way. The other portion was for those lots that are adjacent to the golf courses. And, let's see, I can use this. It's over on this east side. There's a number of lots in there over the years that have installed up to an 18-foot-high golf course screening fence, and you've seen those along other golf courses in other communities. We have discovered that they were being put in there without any permits and in violation of our maximum fence height for rear yards, which is six feet. The need for the screening is pretty obvious, wonderland golf balls crashing into their houses, but more importantly, from the town standpoint, is they're not engineered. They were placed in there without any kind of engineering or permitting or inspections, and therefore, anything that goes in in the future, we would like to have the ability to do just that, have them properly engineered, installed correctly, and inspected so that the foundations and footers can withstand any of the stress of an 18-foot-high fencing. So this formalizes the basic request. The Gardens is asking to permit a front yard fence enclosure to allow up to four-foot in height and to go up to the 18 feet with the golf course fences. Right now, typically throughout the Gardens, there's a variety of front yard fences, from decorative block to type of rail, different designs. They don't mandate any particular design. There are about a dozen out there now, as I stated, that have the chain link enclosure for their pets. The two main things that are within the draft code would be to allow up to the four-foot, but no greater than two feet being opaque. In other words, the bottom layer could be of solid wall material or whatever, but the upper two feet has to be something that you can see through. This is for, the primary reason is for SEPTIT, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, so that our patrolling officers have the ability to look into the property. It's not blanked out. A two-foot height minimizes the ability for any kind of perpetrator to hide behind or things of that nature. So that's where that detail comes from. Also, we're not going to allow slating. We don't really permit it anyplace else. It suffers wind damage, monsoon damage. It's just not a sturdy material to put inside of a chain link fence if it is used. Then again, also on the 18-foot fences I mentioned, this gives the town the ability to make sure what is placed along the golf course are safe. We have met with residents and board members. They had their own citizen meeting earlier this year. It has been appropriately advertised and posted, and the planning commission has heard this. Their recommendation and findings, the proposed amendments consistent with the needs of the community, and the proposed amendments should facilitate ongoing development and use of private property. They forward a recommendation of approval to the council with no specific stipulations or conditions, but if there is any that you would like to add, this would be the time.
I appreciate your presentation. I do see some representatives from Florence Gardens here as well. Is there anything that they would like to add in conjunction to the presentation?
Good evening, Mayor Walter, and members of the town council. My name is Emily Webster. I live in Florence Gardens at 904 East California Boulevard, and I'm currently serving on the Board of Directors, and I'm also chair of the Architectural Committee. I wanted to express my appreciation for the community development staff. They've been terrific. Not quite two years ago, the opportunity to talk and to listen began between interim director Dana Burkhart and then Larry Harmer, with the board members and the Architectural Committee members to try to find solutions to problems. And the overlay is that solution that we feel is a perfect fit. Our few but specific rules about lot development are in line with what the town has, but this overlay will be the identified missing piece to handle past and future fencing issues that we have. I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission and was delighted that they recommended it to you. I want you to know that the Board of Directors, Directors for the Florence Gardens Mobile Home Association, and the members of the Architectural Committee strongly support its approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Webster. Council, do you have any questions? All right. With that, this is also a public hearing, which I am opening at this time to any other members of the audience. Does anybody have anything else that they would like to add at this time? Okay, closing the public hearing. This is the first reading of ordinance number 682-19. Ms. Garcia, when will this come before us again?
It will be at your next meeting.
All right, thank you very much.
August 19th.
All right, so on August 19th, we will vote for that. Our next presentation is item number C. This is presentation on Give a Lift program. Ms. Carolyn Ballard.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity for me to share the program with you. So the mission of our Give a Lift program is we're dedicated to promoting independence and enhancing the quality of life to senior and disabled residents by providing a no-means cost of transportation to medical appointments. Those we're serving are all Florence residents who are at least 55 years old and those with a disability. The service we're providing is, it's all a volunteer-based program. All our volunteers have agreed to use their own vehicles to provide medical transportation services to our residents. Like I said, there's no cost, and all those drivers are able to get a gas donation if the resident offers that to them. Volunteers are also able to use the Dorothy Nolan Senior Center handicap accessible vehicles when needed, which we have been transporting a few of those when they need the wheelchair lifts. Program funding is through an ADOT 5310 mobility grant. It began October 1st. We were awarded $14,000. Town Florence agreed to a 50% match. Services began, our first ride was January 7th, and that was for a lady that needed to go from Cactus Forest to Southwestern Eye Center there in Coolidge. First quarter performance outcomes, you'll see the numbers here. During that first three months, January through March of 2019, we had eight volunteers who donated 130 and a half volunteer hours, drove 2,514 miles for a total of 86 trips. The next quarter, 11 different volunteers provided 152.25 volunteer hours, 2,434 miles for 131 trips. So you can see we're gradually growing there. So just a six-month overview from January through June. So we had 17 different volunteers provide almost 291 hours, 4,948 miles for 217 trips. At that time, we had 36 registered clients, will be up to 41 as of 9:30 tomorrow morning. Average age of our client is 74. 15 of those are disabled, two require complete wheelchair lift. Besides those performance outcomes, the most important one, I think, is that we are also providing wonderful connections and friendships that are happening. That's one of my favorite. Virginia there just had an appointment three weeks ago, where she came back, and unfortunately, she's cancer-free. So we've been providing her transportation to all her cancer appointments, so we're excited about that and blessed for that. Couple of clients, we have two that always need to be utilized with the wheelchair lifts. And that's a picture of him now getting a ride to his appointment. But of the totals I gave you, those two clients have utilized eight trips at 431 miles with the senior centers' vans. Just a little quote there from Julia. She says, "I love this program. What does Old Coates in Florence do without Give a Lift?" She's got a few rides, and she's a character. And so we, in March, started the application process for the upcoming next two years. ADOT has changed their grant funding program to a two-year process. So we did get in June, the preliminary award for the Give a Lift program was awarded $10,000. Town of Florence agreed to a 50% match, and that includes a 5,628 in-kind match estimate for our volunteer driver hours. So awesome thing there is the money's coming from the volunteers' time. And then, so my goal for the program, our goal, is hoping to increase the number of volunteers, so I'm always looking if any of you are interested, so that we can support and be able to continue to provide rides to all medical appointments, but to add the opportunity to do service appointments, whether it's banking, social services, shopping trips, all the things that still will fall within ADOT's policies for as far as what a 5310 grant is for. So hopefully, we just keep growing those numbers. That's Danielle. She's one of the very, all the volunteers are dedicated. Volunteers have been just a true blessing. I like her quote a lot. She says, "The Florence Give a Lift program has touched me in unexpected ways. Of course, I'm happy that I'm helping to provide a much-needed service to seniors in my community, and that is personally fulfilling. What I did not expect are the connections I've made with some of the seniors and the stories we tell in our drives. Happy, sad, funny, but never boring. Life's an interesting ride." That's Danielle. All right, and then that's my contact information. If you guys have any questions, or like I said, need to sign up for a ride, know a neighbor that could benefit from the service, or of course, if you want to volunteer. All right, any questions?
I want to thank our volunteers, first of all. And what are we doing to raise, other than our amazing presentation that you just gave, to raise awareness? Are there any requirements, ages, that, you know, for people to...
For volunteers? Yeah. Well, most of my volunteers are seniors themselves. My oldest volunteer is 88 years old. The youngest is 57. But I try to attend as many of the Town of Florence events, community service events there are. A lot of my volunteers come out of Anthem, since it's, you know, Sun City is an active adult community itself, with retirees that have the time and the willingness to do it. So I spend a lot of time there presenting at their new homeowner association meetings and whatever else they invite me to, and try to just stay in contact with the community, whether I'm going to Florence Gardens, hanging out flyers everywhere, you know. And then a lot of it is just word of mouth. I'm making sure the volunteers are sharing their experience. Clients are sharing. My most recent volunteer, I signed up two weeks ago. It was from her neighbor, who is a client of ours, that's received a few rides, told her about it, and so she called me, and we got her signed up. So it's just, like I said, word of mouth, and just keeping it out there, and just hoping that people just kind of keep sharing. Like I said, right now, and I just had a volunteer actually just step down due to health reasons today, you know, but the volunteers that I do have, like I said, they're very dedicated. And they say sometimes volunteer drivers are hardest to get, but once you have them, they're hooked. I mean, and the volunteers, we do vet them with background checks, motor vehicle checks. I sit with them, do the application process, we'll sit, go through a training orientation guide that we've come up with, and just make sure to just keep, for retention purposes, just keep working with them and making sure that they're involved, that they're happy. I do my best. I also do intakes with every client. That way, we're making sure we're kind of vetting those and that we're setting our volunteers into a safe environment, and that way, it gives me the opportunity to be able to get to know the individual and try to match them up best with a volunteer that they'll get along with to build those companionship and those connections, which have happened. We've had quite a few volunteers who are calling clients just during the week to check on them, making a hospital visit if they hear they're in the hospital, calling to say, "Hey, I'm going to the grocery store. Can I pick you up anything?" They've taken them yard selling on Saturday mornings, taken them out to dinner with their families. So that's the best thing. It's not just that we're giving them the help medically that they need for these appointments, but they're getting that companionship that a lot of them are missing when I see, when I go into the home.
That is very heartwarming.
It is. I love it.
I have a question. Do you require a proof of insurance?
Yes. Each volunteer, we make sure we get copies of their driver's license, and I keep a picture of their insurance and make sure that we keep those updated in their files.
Good. Thank you.
Do the cars have any signage that's on them, any magnets or anything?
They don't. Actually, Judy Hughes was a volunteer, and she actually brought that up one time, and we've talked about it, and I just haven't got on to that part of it yet to her. Definitely because it is a grant, so before this fiscal year ends, looking at the funds, those are some things that we'd like to do.
All right, well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And I hope more people sign up as well.
Me too. Get the word out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Item D is our next presentation on upcoming special events. Ms. Allison Fleas.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you, guys, for having me back again for the fall events. This is a look at our fall events, as well as a sneak peek at what we're looking or working on for the spring of 2020. And also, this presentation is different than what you guys had in your packets. The first event, if you guys have never been to it, is on Main Street, the Florence High School Homecoming. This event is put on by the FHS Student Council, and the K-8 schools walk down with their classrooms to the parade. Big community event, lot of fun for the kids, and I see a lot of businesses out enjoying the parade as well. The next event is our Halloween Fright Fest. This event has grown. This is our third year having it on Main Street. Some new things that we're looking to do this year is to have a touch-a-truck portion of the event, so that would happen right there on Main Street as well, looking to get some excavators and hopefully, a rad truck, and just a bunch of different things out there for the kids to take pictures with, a fire truck, a police car. And then we are also working again with the Chamber of Commerce. Last year, Larry was a lot of help, and we did a bingo component to the event, but we're looking to do some shop local punch cards for the event as well, and then people get drawn into a raffle after that, and hopefully, they can win some prizes and just remind people to shop local. That's the whole idea of having these events on Main Street to try and boost the economic development. This event happens out in Anthem. They host this event, and it's their anthem celebrates the arts. Another event out in Anthem, Concert in the Park. I believe these events that I'm putting on here are open to the public. The Relay for Life, this is going to be held at the Aquatic Center multipurpose fields, but also goes into the parking lot. It's a well-lit area, and they used to have this event at the high school, and it would be all night long, but they changed their hours. It's going to go from 6:00 PM to midnight now. This is a new event. This is a drive-in movie. We used to have a movie in the park, and that was offered in September, but we've been wanting to have a drive-in movie for a few years now, and finally worked with the screen company, and they're going to be able to put the station that everyone needs to tune into on a screen, and it'll be a legit drive-in movie. Looking forward to that. And we're going to be showing Aladdin for this night, and we're also looking to work with FTC to have some pre-event crafts or some type of activity, and we'll have some vendors there as well. The next event is our Junior Parata Parade and Rodeo. The posse puts on the rodeo, and that happens at the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds, starting on Friday, the 29th, and it goes until Sunday, December 1st. The town's portion is the parade, and we've been trying to increase the parade participants. We've gotten more horse-drawn entries the last few years, so we're looking to continue to grow that portion of it. The posse also did mention that they're trying to get a carnival, so that might be a possibility out at the rodeo grounds that would happen there, not in town. Our next event is our Christmas on Main Street event. I think I've seen all of you at this event in the past. Same concept for this year's festivities, trying to get some more characters to come out, not just Santa Claus, and just continue to offer an awesome parade and just the downtown small historic charm to the event. Another new event that we're looking to bring in, this is going to be the Day After Christmas on Main, so it'll be an early, late night and an early morning. We're partnering with Four Peaks Racing. They're the ones who do the Anthem Triathlon, so we're going to have them come in and run the race, and we'll partner with them on that. This will be Saturday, December 7th, 8:00 AM, and then after the run, we'll have the Breakfast with Santa at the Community Center. For this run, we're hoping that people dress up with elf costumes. We'll provide jingle bells for them to run down Main Street, and we're still working out the logistics with the race company, but we're really looking forward to this event. It's also something that we've been wanting to do for a while. Arts in the Park is another Anthem event. This one's held at the Union Center Parking Lot. And the Music Festival is a spring, we're thinking, springtime event. We were looking, trying to give some tentative dates, and our schedule is packed. There's a lot of things that happen in Florence during the springtime. This event, we have a RFP drafted for it. It hasn't hit the street yet, but we do have it drafted. We're kind of modeling Queen Creek and their event partnership program that they rolled out a few years back. We just kind of took some of their notes. I talked with their event coordinator and got some do's and don'ts for that. And we had the idea of maybe doing decades. I know council had expressed the possibility of a Bluegrass Festival. We're just kind of putting it out there on the RFP and whatever we get back, and we'll have a committee that will decide and vote. I have some criteria that they'll have, and they'll vote on which they think is best for the economic development, to bring people downtown, what we think will be a best fit for Florence. This next event is an art festival again. It's a tentative date because looking at the calendar, there's a lot going on. We did think that that is MLK weekend, but it might be a good weekend to have this event. We are also looking at other art festivals around town, and one of the things with art festivals is that you have artists that are going to these other events, so you don't want to compete with the bigger, more established events. The event pictured is the Fourth Street Fair down in Tucson, and that's what we envision happening here in Florence. We would love for it to grow and be as big as what you see there. And this also will have an RFP. It's already drafted. We just, if there's any last... any last minute tweaks we need to make to it, we can do that. Another springtime event is a prison break run. We would be partnering again with the Four Peaks Racing for this event. Um, the date we set for that one is March 21st, but we are working out some of the logistics as far as an obstacle course and location as to where we would be able to offer something like that, liability, all those fun points. And that is it. Does anybody have any questions?
Just running from the men's prison? That's, I'm kidding.
We could do that too.
I am really excited about all of the new events that are being brought forward. Um, guys are definitely doing a great job listening and bringing things forward. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about the, the Music Festival.
Mm-hmm.
I know that the Posse has been talking about doing a music festival.
Uh-huh.
I'd like to see us somehow work with them to, uh, see if we can incorporate that as part of our music festival or make it one big music festival.
Yeah, we, um, we have a meeting with Keith on Wednesday set up, so we're going to talk with him and see if there's any possibilities of the town or art department, um, helping to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you. I'll see Keith is here, is he?
Yep.
He is. He is drumming amazing this weekend.
Thank you. Thank you, Ally.
Thank you.
Councilmember Larson?
I just wanted to say the same thing about the other Music Festival and, um, how impressed I am because it's things that we've been talking about so long. And so I'm very excited about all of them. I've gotten my notes. I'm ready to blast it on social media. Let's do this. It's going to be so much fun.
Councilmember Cortez?
Um, so just along the Music Festival line, so if you were to partner with the Florence Music Festival, would then we still have another festival? Or are you thinking partner and just do one festival?
We have an art, the RFP process would have, Keith would have to put in a bid for the, or the proposal for that. And then we can go from there. And like I said, it wouldn't be me making the decision. It'd be a couple of different people from the town and we can go from there. And it also depends on what is proposed. If another qualified bidder were to get it and there was money still available, then I, we can possibly see if we can do two music festivals.
Okay. I, I agree with Kristen and everyone else too, though. I like what's coming. It's exciting.
Us too. And thank you guys for the funding to make these events happen.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And will we be posting this PowerPoint to our town website? And can we email it to us? Awesome.
Can we add, make them events as well on Facebook, please? That way then people can RSVP. Thank you.
Good idea. All right. Our next item is our consent agenda. I am pulling item A, so I'm not going to read it at this time. Item B is approval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Penal County through the Penal County Sheriff's Office for usage of graffiti abatement material. Item C is approval to enter into a community development block grant program, cooperation and coordination agreement with Penal County. Item C is approval to enter into a contract with Day Auto Supply, also known as Napa Auto Parts, through a cooperative contract through the Arizona Department of Administration Solicitation Number ADS PO 16 00005626, Contract Number ADS PO 16 129364 for aftermarket parts, automotive parts and service in an amount not to exceed $63,800. Item E is approval to enter into a contract with Protech Environmental Inc. Corporation to provide sewer line cleaning for CIPSU 94 Annual Sewer Line Cleaning Project in an amount not to exceed $90,000. Notice of Task Order Change for Westland Resources Issued for On-Call Engineering pursuant to Council Approved Contract. Item G is approval to enter into a four-year contract with Piper Jaffray and Company. Piper Jaffray to serve as the town's financial advisor. And item H is approval of accepting the Register of Demands ending June 30th, 2019 in the amount of $3,725,237.59. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Is there any member of council or public that would like any item removed at this time?
I'd like item E removed.
Okay, item E. With that, may I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing items A and E at this time?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Vice Mayor Anderson, proceed with item E, please.
Uh, just a simple question on item E. I thought, uh, that the idea when we bought this machine, that we would be doing our own sewer line cleaning.
The Jetter truck was removed out of the budget, which was a $400,000 purchase. The Jetter trailer's not for cleaning out large volumes of sewer. It's a much smaller purchase for much different application. Um, what's been discussed amongst staff, me and the superintendent, is that a large Jetter trailer for our community does not make sense as an investment. It takes too much personnel throughout the year to run it, dedicated personnel that we don't have today.
Okay, I guess I just misunderstood that. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Would you like to approve that at that time?
Yes. I move that we approve item E of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item A is a proclamation declaring August 2019 as Drowning Impact Awareness Month. Mr. Brian Hughes.
Mayor, in conjunction with this proclamation, we kind of had a little bit of a surprise and I, I asked Commander Maldonado to stay this evening. And I'd also like to invite up our fire chief and Chase Haller, Aquatic Center manager. So, so let's first read the proclamation and then we'll, uh, talk about why these folks are here. Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and read this for you right until the last part. All right. So drowning impact awareness month. Whereas Arizona's future prosperity depends upon the long-term health, safety and wellbeing of nearly 2 million children and teens in our state. And whereas drowning is a top cause of injury and death for children and teens in Arizona, affecting not only the victims, but also families, emergency personnel and our society as a whole. And whereas child drownings are nearly 100% preventable, including drownings which are classified as maltreatment and make up an average of one in four cases in Arizona. And whereas research proven strategies can save lives, including constant and capable supervision, restricting access to water, use of life jackets, swimming lessons for adults and children at the appropriate age, rapid emergency response, including CPR and safe, stable and nurturing relationships in communities to break the cycle of maltreatment. And whereas awareness of the problem is just the first step, evidence-based programs to bring these tragedies, strategies to families is the best way to save lives. And whereas during the month of August, the Phoenix Children's Hospital, in collaboration with state and local governments, community organizations and private citizens will be engaging communities throughout Arizona in a coordinated and comprehensive response.
Now therefore, I Tara Walter, Mayor, do hereby proclaim August 2019 as drowning impact awareness month and urge all communities and citizens in Arizona to participate in efforts to reduce drowning, strengthen families and protect children and teens.
So, so Mayor, um, thank you for that proclamation, but last week, uh, Commander Maldonado, uh, indicated that he was going to be here for the bingo license, but also mentioned that they are willing to donate $300 for new life vests for the Aquatic Center. And I thought what a great opportunity to, to tie this proclamation with his donation and the American Legion. So, uh, Chase is here and again, the fire chief are all they do to help with drowning prevention as well. So, thank you. That, that donation will buy approximately 30 new life vests for the Aquatic Center. So thank you so much to the American Legion. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Now we proceed to item 8A, Unfinished Business, Ordinance Number 680-19. Mr. Larry Harmer. This is going to be our second reading and discussion, approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, approving the highway business commercial B2 zone change.
Mayor, Council, I have no additional presentation from, uh, your previous meeting, so unless you have any questions. And we do have a representative of the property owner here, should you have anything specific for them.
I do not have any since our last meeting. Any council members have any? With that, we need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to accept Hannah Earl and Grace DiOrio's, uh, please, I'm reading the wrong thing. All right. This is what?
8A.
8A. Excuse me. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 680-19.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 8B is ordinance number 681-19. Again, this is the second reading and discussion, approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, approving certain non-conforming uses of property within units 1, 2, 3, 4 of Caliente Casa del Sol and declaring an emergency. Mr. Larry Harmer.
Mayor, Council, um, first of all, the declaring an emergency, I don't, I thought that was going to be struck, but, you know, um, but we have no additional presentation tonight.
All right. Excellent. Council members, do you have any questions regarding this item?
Nope.
All right. At this time, we need a motion.
I think I've caught up enough. Now I can make the motion properly. I'll make a motion to, to approve ordinance 681-19.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to items nine, 9A, New Business Discussion Approval Disapproval of Hannah Earls and Grace DiOrio's Resignations From the Florence Youth Commission. Mr. John Nixon. Mr. Brian. Brian Hughes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, I apologize. John, uh, went homesick earlier today, so I, I'm filling in. Um, we had two of the youth commissioners resign for personal reasons, uh, recently. And, um, it's unfortunate. They were both good kids and we would have liked to have seen them continue. However, there are lots of other teens out there and we've already begun the recruitment process to fill those positions. So we anticipate we'll be able to do that with maybe some teens from the Florence Teen Council. And, uh, we also have two, uh, teens joining us at the League Youth Program, uh, later this month. So hopefully those teens will express an interest in joining the commission once that's over. So, um, that's all I have.
All right. Councilmember Larson, do you have anything?
Yeah, I was just going to say they're fantastic girls and, um, it breaks my heart to see them leave. And we wish them the best in their future endeavors. Um, also want to encourage, and if there is any youth out there that is interested or watching, or maybe somebody who knows a teen, to encourage them to apply. It's a great opportunity to have a direct access to working with the council and to be able to make some, um, very large decisions, not just for the youth in the town, but also for everyone in the town.
Mayor, I'd just like to add, this is still a very new commission and we're still kind of finding our way, um, as, uh, Councilmember Larson knows, but, uh, I anticipate good things from the group and we look forward to filling those vacancies.
Absolutely.
What's the age limit on that?
Through 12th grade, I believe.
No, starting.
I think it's 15.
Yeah. So I just want to thank the kiddos for their participation, wish them well. They're still learning who they are and encourage anybody else who would like to participate. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Hannah Earls and Grace DiOrio's resignation from the Florence Youth Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. And the motion carries. Item B is discussion approval, disapproval to contract with Fortoline Inc. Corporation through the City of Phoenix Contract Solicitation Number IFB 15-158. This is contract number 4701004826. Water elbows, fitting pipes, shafts, flanges, et cetera, to provide for water and wastewater projects in an amount not to exceed $250,000. Mr. Christopher Salas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. This is the exact same contract we brought to the council last year. This allows staff to be able to purchase parts when needed. Uh, this will be used to outfit our water barn when constructed this fiscal year. And it allows staff to react quickly if there is a project that comes out of need in the middle of the year. We had two such projects, um, last fiscal year and we finished, well, I guess it was this fiscal, I mean, last fiscal year as well. We, um, did a project down Ruggles, um, due to some aging infrastructure. So this just allows us to operate, uh, more quickly. These contracts were already competitively bid by a larger city. So it just enables us to, again, work through the procurement.
All right. Are there any questions regarding this agenda item?
I, I have a question, Chris. Uh, where does this fit in the budget?
It doesn't spit, we don't fund, these are operational things. So sometimes they would be within an operational item. It could be used to fund a small CIP project. So it's under, generally speaking, it would be operation, I believe, 326 is the line item.
Okay. Thank you.
I did have one question. Um, how much last year, because I know, and you may or may not know this off the top of your head, but I know it's in an amount not to exceed $250,000. How much did we utilize this past year of that?
I believe under $30,000.
Okay.
This is again, this creates free board for the department in order to react again to needs for economic development projects, for maintenance projects, for CIP projects that if it was something that came out of need, um, this just allows us to operate a little bit more efficiently.
All right.
But nothing outside of the budget. Like I said, these are items that still have to fit within the budget already.
Okay. Thank you so much. With that, we need a motion.
I motion to approve, what are we doing here? Sorry. I do know what I'm doing. I motion to approve the authorization to contract with Frontline Inc. through the City of Phoenix Contract Solicitation Number IFB 15-158, Contract Number 4701004826. Water elbows, fitting pipes, shafts, flings, et cetera, expiring on 6/30/2020 to provide parts for water and wastewater projects from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, an amount not to exceed $250,000.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C is discussion approval, disapproval to enter into a professional services contract with Coolidge Engine and Pump for deep well and well pump maintenance in an amount not to exceed $300,000. Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Um, tonight, I'm very proud of this item. This was a solicitation that we created internal. So this is not a job order contract through another community. This is specific to our town. Um, the owners of Coolidge Engine and Pump have been serving this community, from what I understand, probably well past 20 years. And it was always through individual items. And so most communities for their water and wastewater facilities have these type of JOCs. Unfortunately, the, the Unfortunately, the JOCs that are available to us would mostly be through vendors that are sixty, seventy, eighty miles away in the valley, and that doesn't serve our needs very well. So, we did our own solicitation, and we were able to receive three bids, of which two were actually rejected and were not considered responsible. This particular vendor met with me through the approval of the finance director, Ray Sanchez, to negotiate the items. One of the things that was a concern of mine was that I never want to pay more than the low bid price, just because we're using a JOC. And so, how can we determine that we are getting a good deal? And so, he told me that we were getting a good deal. And I said, can you prove it to me? Would you let me audit a few of your projects? So, he had won, he had won projects in a competitive low bid environment. He brought me all the paperwork, the receipts from his vendors, and so, we are actually able to get a better price for this particular contract than the low bid competitive price. And I said, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Can you explain to me? He says, well, we're building a relationship here. This is a two-year contract, and because I'm guaranteed work, I can actually cut down the markup on your prices. So, that made me feel good that he was honest enough to give me a full audit of the projects that we had looked at. So, sometimes, some of the smaller items were marked up as much as forty-seven percent for something two hundred dollars. He also indicated to me that for motors, he was unwilling to mark them up twenty-nine percent for the contract, but that we would pay twenty percent. And I said, well, would you put that in writing? And he said, absolutely. So, we've also, by negotiating that, we've also reduced that price. Even though he said he would do it, we have it in writing now. And so, the last time we bought a motor from him, that's what we paid. It was a markup of twenty percent. So, I believe the town has acted accordingly, done all of its due diligence to make sure that we are, we are providing a JOC with pricing that is at least as cheap as a competitive IFB process, an invitation for bids, and I would argue cheaper.
Excellent, excellent explanation. And council, do you have any questions? Council member Wall.
Is it possible that the development of this contract could be made accessible to other communities in the area?
Yes, the language was included to have a cooperative, yes.
I really like seeing us utilize more local or close to local businesses, so thank you for negotiating this.
Yes, like I said, I'm very happy, because I do believe it's a win-win for Penal County, Coolidge, Florence, and the fact that, again, he's been serving our community for a very long time. And this just gives us a mechanism that meets our procurement policies that are set in place, that I can sleep well at night knowing that there's no rules being broken, but at the same time, we're getting, again, the lowest possible price. And it allows us, the invitation for bid process typically costs us somewhere about seventy-five to eighty days all in. That's a significant amount of my fiscal year to procure such services. This one here, we're able to react very fast. So, within days, and we'll speak about this in the Ellison Mills contract, within days of actually issuing a task order, we can have prices back and then move forward. Once again, it still has to all fit within the budget. And so, to answer that question, just in case, Coolidge Engine and Pump, again, is going to operate under the operating supplies for the water department, as well as our well preservation program and the well five CIP. So, a, one specific contract will get paid out of multiple line items, depending on what the need is for our community.
Excellent, thank you.
I have a couple comments. This is outstanding, Chris. I'm pleased that you did that. In the future, I'd like for you to include in your, all our phones are going off.
Dust storm.
Dust storm, okay. Please include that you did go out for other bids, because I was, I was going to do this to see if you'd done the three bids. I couldn't figure whether we, whether you had done that or not. So, just in the future, if you would, put that in there. The other thing I would suggest, and maybe this is something to the town manager, is how do we get more of these type agreements with some of the local towns, you know, Eloy, Coolidge, you know, our neighbors, so we don't have to deal with Phoenix and Chandler and those places, to encourage vendors to come out here into Penal County. Thank you.
Mr. Billingsley?
Yes, I'm glad that the council member brought that forward. We try to encourage and utilize local contracts as much as we can. As you'll notice, a lot of our maintenance and paving projects are all cooperative with Penal County. So, not only do we include cooperative language, but we encourage all of our local partners to provide cooperative language in their contracts. Whenever you see us utilize Maricopa County, City of Phoenix, City of Chandler, City of Mesa, oftentimes, that is because of the order of magnitude in terms of cost benefit because of the volume of product that they purchase. And we, we try to be very mindful of our public's dollars and be a good public fiduciary. But we'll continue to try and utilize local contractors and local cooperative agreements as much as we can.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate you making sure that not, we're not just getting a good price, but that we're getting quality service and things like that for our price. So, I, I really appreciate that. And I second what council member Wall and Anderson said, that I like partnering with our community neighbors, because then it just helps us all grow and benefit from that. So, thank you.
All right. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion to enter into a professional services contract with Coolidge Engine and Pump. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item D is discussion approval disapproval to enter into a contract with Ellison Mills Contracting LLC utilizing job order contract zero eight one six one four through the City of Casa Grande Public Works on-call maintenance and repair services in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This item, this contractor in particular was the low bid contractor for our most recent twelve-inch downtown Phase Three B project. So, once they were under contract and they were doing a great job, we asked them, do you have any particular JOCs that we could look at? Because we enjoy working with you. We know your prices are competitive, because you just won a contract. And if I remember right, they were approximately a hundred thousand dollars lower than the next competitive bid. So, they were able to give us this contract. They met, they met, they sat down with us, and we already have multiple projects planned for this project, multiple projects planned for this contract. We recently had a, an inspection. ADQ is now inspecting the collection system. And not surprisingly, for a town of, what, one hundred and fifty-two-plus years old, we have some manholes that have some deterioration. So, out of this three hundred thousand dollars, based on pricing I received today, a matter of hours ago, we already have earmarked two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in manhole repairs along Bu, along our main trunk line going to the plant. We also have some other planned projects. So, I would ask accordingly for five hundred thousand dollars for this particular contract. This is going to be primarily used for, again, repairs around the wastewater plant. We approved a contract a couple of years ago for Felix Construction, a very similar contract. I can't remember the entity that we used for the cooperative purchase of. This is, again, a very similar contract. We have a well two B to outfit, hopefully using this contract to finish off the piping. We have a clarifier at the North Plant that we hope to use this contract for. So, we have multiple items already earmarked for this contract.
All right. Thank you for that. Council, any questions?
So, we're asking, instead of approving not to exceed three hundred K, we're talking about approving five hundred K. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, council member Wall.
Thank you.
What part of your budget will that be in? Would it be, like the other ones you told us, it would be out of supply budget? Which ones would this, which one does this fall under?
This will be under operational as well. A lot of these will be maintenance projects. The well two B outfitting will be charged to the CIP line item. But due to the fact that, again, this ADQ inspection was not known on last budget year, we will have to internally adjust or tighten our belts in certain areas. We are going to have to spread some of these projects. At the same time, I'm not positive that our headworks project will be a million and a half dollars. So, some of that money will have to be appropriated to, towards our operational. Obviously, operational always has to supersede the CIP projects. It's, it's most important we keep our items working correctly versus building new additional infrastructure.
Mr. Billingsley, in looking at our budget, how will the additional two hundred thousand dollars impact us?
Chris and I have, have gone over his budget and the, to his point, the two hundred and sixty thousand that we're going to have to do to eat out of the original three hundred thousand, that's brand new. That's based on an inspection that ADQ did a month ago, where they identified a number of manholes that are in poor condition. They've never inspected our collection system before. We don't have any choice. This is much like our project that we had to do last year regarding the post EQ or our storage basin, remember that we had to line at the North Plant last year? We have to find the money to do that project. They don't give us a choice. So, as Chris said, the remainder of those will be out of the CIP item for well two, two-three B, his operational expenses, and then the budgeted maintenance funds in his budget.
Now, I do also notice, in going back in the previous item that we approved for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that he did not extend beyond thirty thousand dollars in last fiscal year. So, there is potential, if we run that same trend, that there's an additional two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Chris has to manage to his budget in all of these items. The good news on these last couple contracts is those are enterprise funds. And council has done a very good job of managing those enterprise funds to make sure that we have an account balance to help us when we have emergencies like the two hundred and sixty thousand that Chris just spoke to. And we are less worried. If they were general fund-related items, there would be more concern. But since they're enterprise items, we'll be fine. But Chris still has to manage to his budget.
Excellent. Council, any further questions? Council member Wall?
Just out of curiosity, what is it that ADAC found that is wrong with our collection system?
There's a deterioration of the concrete in the manholes, and that can allow for infiltration and exfiltration. And so, we need to shore up the manholes through a process of coating the manholes.
Thank you.
It's, it's going to be something you're going to see all throughout Arizona over the next few months, because this is not unique to Florence. This is not unique to the east side of the valley. This is, everyone is going to be hit with these same inspections that they weren't ready for. So, as part of this inspection, I hope I'm not too far off topic, the town of Florence will be creating an owner and operation manual. I'm not all the way through the first draft of that, so that's consuming a large chunk of time right now, because we don't have an operation manual. So, we're going to be putting that together. That's a requirement by ADQ. It's not necessarily a cost. We do believe we can do that in-house versus, I don't know, spending a hundred thousand dollars on a consultant. We're doing that in-house.
Appreciate that.
So, these are some of the requirements that, again, that we didn't see. They were not conveyed to us verbally. And this is, as Brent said, ADQ is what the state sets the guidelines for us on these things. So, these are, these are things that we need to get done. And I'm not complaining about necessarily doing the manholes. They need to be done, and we're working on these things. There's lots for us to do in public works.
Thank you. Have they been worked on in the past, and what's the average age?
Honestly, I mean, I, I feel bad for saying this. I don't know if we've ever done an inspection on our manhole system, because, again, it wasn't a requirement. And so, while not speaking ill of past public works directors, my thought process, they focused their energy on compliance on items that needed to comply, and on items where there was no compliance requirement, they said, we'll deal with that when it's needed. So, I couldn't honestly have a guess on it. But some of our manholes are definitely from, I think, the nineteen thirties.
Fair enough. I appreciate your honesty. All right, with that, I need a motion, and please note.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
One of the things that we talked about here is water meter services, reading water meters. I thought we were going to get out of that business.
I apologize. Where is that on our?
It's on the second page.
Oh, I apologize, yes. That, that is their scope of work under that contract. We are not going to be utilizing them for that. I apologize. That was just a complete scope of work under the contract through Casa Grande. I just provided you all of the services.
Okay.
But we are not going to be utilizing that.
Thank you.
With that, we need a motion. Please note, the amount has changed to five hundred thousand dollars, not to exceed.
Make a motion to enter into contract with Ellison Mills Contracting LLC utilizing job order contract zero eight one six dash one four through the City of Casa Grande Public Works on-call maintenance and repair services in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Billingsley for the manager's report?
I just noticed that Lisa's such a team player, she had a jacket made in the same material as our new chairs. Thank you, Lisa. Sorry. We have two birthdays tonight that I wanted to make sure that we mentioned. If you'd like to stand, you guys are even sitting together, Chief and Larry. Happy birthday, Chief and Larry.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, Chief Hughes and Larry Harmer.
Happy birthday to you.
And many more. Do you want us in your band?
I have some really good news to offer outside of the typical manager's report. We had thirty-five building permits last month. For any of you that track building permits from month to month, that is the highest single-month total since July of two thousand nine. Ninety total building permits. This is single-family home, so thirty-five is a big number for us, and we're on track to have the highest total that we've had since two thousand eight. For example, last year, we had two hundred and twenty-three total, and the previous year, we had two fifteen. We think that we're going to far exceed that this year. So, that's, that's great to get a single-family residential total of that type. And we've had a couple of other records. Last year, kind of, I mean, last month dropped off a little bit, but we've had a couple other high numbers in the preceding months. With regard to the town manager's report, essentially in the community vitality section, I gave a closeout and a rundown of the success of the Aquatic Center from this last year, where we set a number of records in terms of revenues, as well as attendance, and new programs as well. So, thank you very much, Brian, for that. One of the key things that I mentioned in the report was the success of the summer kids, kids' club, and then the transition into the hanging after-school program. Those of you out in TV land might note that the town has provided for a number of years a before and after-school program. That before and after-school program has been contracted by the Florence Unified School District, and the town was asked to provide a low-cost solution, and that became the hanging after-school program. And from seeing my kids participate, obviously, but, but seeing the program, I would comment in a couple of different ways. Number one, we have a lot of folks enrolled. The number provided in the report is twenty-four, but John gave me an update today and said it's thirty-six, which is great. The other thing that was requested from parents and from the mayor, quite honestly, last year, was additional activities for the children, so that they could choose outside activities beyond doing their homework. And I'm happy to report that every day, there is, there's an arts and music program, there's a sports program, and there's a coding program, and, and the kids and their parents are really enjoying that. So, thank you very much for that. From the economic prosperity perspective, if you haven't had a chance to go out and drive on highway, Dear Horton has started constructing their models. So, that's very exciting. You can see houses being built. Sheathing was going on. You can see houses being built, sheathing was going on the roof. Karen and I were talking about that before the meeting, so, very exciting, there's an additional 305 lots over there that we hope will have single-family homes on them in the near future. We've listed a number of, of upcoming agenda items, and those continue to be checked off and new ones added from a month-to-month basis. Under the Partnerships and Relationships section, we worked, as you know, with CAC last year to provide a workforce education and business series. I've met with the leadership of CAC, and, and we're going to try to make some adjustments to that, to try and get not only business training, but training that can benefit some of our local, local employers, as, as well as, as government employers in this area, to try and get those, those numbers up. From the transportation and infrastructure perspective, hopefully you all had a chance to drive in on First Street today, has anybody driven First Street? Excellent, the, the paving turned out great. The project took quite a while, but the project has turned out great. If it rains big tonight, it looks really stormy outside, Chris and I will be able to check the drainage, and see if the drainage improvements have stuck as well, but the project has, has really turned out great. We provided a couple of upcoming events and forums, and from the success stories perspective, as we always provide, statewide numbers are looking really good, and they continue to look good in, in terms of revenues. Ben and I got to sit through a presentation about, I'm looking for Ben, there's Ben, he's on the other side of the room tonight. We got to sit through a presentation from a well-known economist two weeks ago, and his forecast for Arizona maintains bullish, especially from the development perspective. He believes that for the next year, our economy will continue to grow, construction in that economy will continue to grow. He thinks that though, that will be followed by a stagnation period potentially in the next year, and then a correction. But he doesn't think that the correction will be of the level of the last two we've seen. He believes it'll be more like the correction that occurred in the year 2000, where housing values, property values kind of normalize, but not the dips that we've seen in 2007 and in, in 2011. With that, that's my manager's report.
Thank you very much. Department reports, any member of council have any question regarding the department reports? All right, want to thank you for taking your time to write your department reports, very informative. Call to the public, this is our second call to the public, is there anybody that would like to speak at this time? All right, closing call to the public. Call to the council, Councilmember Wall.
I just wanted to mention how happy I am to see the results of the Give a Lift program. I was also going to ask a question about how long our funding would be available, and I was happy to hear that we're in the process of applying for another two years of funding. So, I'm hoping we can continue to grow that program, I know that there will be a growing need, as those of us over the age of 55 will be aging even further, and the need will be greater. So, I'm, I'm very much supportive of that program, and would encourage more volunteers as well. So, thank you for that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
I just wanted to say how happy I am with everything, the events that we have coming up. Again, I am, we know we've talked about these extensively for the past couple of years, so I'm very excited to have dates set for all of those, and I look forward to all of them. I also wanted to say, at least the Garcia always looks beautiful, so, I love her coat and her jacket, so, that's all I wanted to say.
Councilmember Cortez?
Yes, so, we are still doing our peanut butter and jelly drive, and I am not ashamed to bake, so, it goes till the 19th. So, if you are not participating, I highly suggest you get on board with the rest of us and participate. Lots of businesses have challenged each other, the Legion challenged the credit union, the Main Street, or, the Silver King, and Total Concepts have challenged each other, some departments, I think, challenged each other, and so, we also have the prison, the state prison is participating, CoreCivic is participating, and IAC, making sure I get that, that correctly, also has joined. We've had some, I think, some donations made, that maybe Brent could tell us about real quick. So, it's going, all the, all the schools have donation bins, Anthem Parkside has a donation bin, Sun City has a donation bin at their community center, Safeway has two donation bins, you can donate here, so there are, everything has been covered on where you could donate, you don't have to go far. Florence Gardens has challenged Caliente today, so, you, there's no excuse, there are bins everywhere to go to. So, I just want to appreciate or say thank you to everybody who is helping us try to get the 2,500 jars of peanut butter and jelly, so we can have the trophy sit right here.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Well, on the peanut butter and jelly drive, I've had to drive to all the stores in the valley, and Safeway has the best prices, so, I'll give a plug for Safeway. But, other thing I would like to thank, the American Legion for inviting us to participate in their 100th anniversary. I think it was well over 100 degrees, but I guess they couldn't change the date on it, but it was, it was quite warm, and they did have a, I don't know what the evening turnout was, but there was a, a fairly nice turnout for the opening exercise, and thanks, thanks again to the American Legion, they do a lot of work for us here, here in town, and for our, our, our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have the song in my head, it's peanut butter jelly time, so I'm so sorry. Everything I wanted to say has been covered, and I have that song repetitively going through my head now. I do appreciate all everybody gives to the community, and I know that you were out, Ms. Cortez, at Florence Gardens, they said, "Yeah, Councilmember Cortez came out," and she was talking about the peanut butter and jelly drive, so, I just love all of the involvement and momentum going on in our community. I was also at the 100th year celebration with Vice Mayor and Councilmember Cortez, and it, it was a great turnout. We played a little bit of cornhole, but we realized it was better for the other people, and we just watched. It's better, safer that way. We are going to adjourn to executive session, and we will come back and adjourn from executive session. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carries.